Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight. It's Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, 6:00 PM. We do have a call, so I will call us to order. Our first item is our invocation that will be given by Dr. Carl Hansen. He is the chaplain for our Jacksonville Police Department. So if you'll stand with the invocation followed by the pledge. Dr. Hansen, thank you so much for doing this for us tonight.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this evening to ask your blessing on this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council. We ask that you be with the leadership of this city, the mayor, the city manager, the city council, and those who have business before this council. We ask you for all the, we thank you for all the dedicated city workers who kept this city functioning during yesterday's storm. Police department, fire department, the utility workers, the janitors, the maintenance personnel, the water department, parks and rec workers, the communications staff, and the IT services. We especially want to mention those who restored the services that were knocked out during this storm. This city has an amazing group of dedicated professionals and volunteers who do an outstanding job of serving this community. So Lord, we ask that you bless each and every one of them for their service and their commitment. And we ask this in your holy name, amen.
Join me in the pledge of the first of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Our next item is a special presentation by, given out by Mr. Shane Pace. So if you'll come. It'll be noted that Jean Keenan, our representative of Republic Services is here in our presence. And we appreciate you coming, Jean. Go ahead, Shane.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. So as you know, every month we acknowledge and honor a business here in Jacksonville. This month, we are honoring Rubies. So if you have not been to Rubies, it's a fantastic Mexican restaurant. I had the opportunity to work with them as they were kind of seeking out Jacksonville and trying to find the best location. And I thought we didn't get them there for a little while because it took a little longer than I thought for them to actually solidify a location. But they did. They are located just behind South Side Bank and the Supergayo Shopping Center back there. If you have not been, the food is fantastic. But one of the things that I wanted to highlight today was their willingness and their desire to give back to the community. You know, we have a lot of restaurants. We have a lot of businesses in town. And you know, they've kind of gone above and beyond, in my opinion, to really just be a support system for those in need. If you're, if you walk into Rubies, you'll see a sign that says, if you need a meal and you can't afford to pay for it, just ask them. We'll give you a meal. That's something you see everywhere that you go. Recently, not the storms we had yesterday, but the big storms just before that, they provided over 200 free meals to the linemen that were trying to restore the power to our regions. So that's something that they just did out of the kindness of their heart. Every Wednesday, they offer a free meal to the folks who work at the Mentoring Alliance. It's a summer camp for kids. And they just, you know, they continue to give back to the community. They have a business card wall in their, in their restaurant where you can put your business card. It's a way for you to advertise because it's not just about them. It's about all of us working together to make this a better place. So they have five restaurants in East Texas. We're number four. I think we're probably the best performing store. I'm just kidding, but I hope that you are. And we're just so glad to have them here. So if you guys wouldn't mind coming up, just say thank you for being here and we'll take a picture for the newspaper. We've got Ruby and her husband Danny.
Thank you.
You guys have been fantastic. Thank you, guys. Give me this. Is there anything else?
Now, we appreciate, you know, all the love and support from Jacksonville. And of course, it took a little while to get here, but you know, God willing, brought us this way. But yes, we'd like to give back to the community, kids in need, families, you know, we're always trying to, you know, try to help out people in need, you know? And we're going to continue to grow. Hopefully, one day, we'll be a big corporation, bigger cities, stuff like that, bringing all the love and support. And you know, without y'all, you know, we wouldn't be Rubies, you know, as we are today. But yeah, we appreciate everything y'all have done for us, man.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you, guys.
Did y'all get your pictures?
Thank you so much. Our next item is a second reading of a resolution in support of economic development incentives. And then we'll discuss and consider some action on that. So Mr. Shane?
Back up. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the second reading, as Mayor Gorham just stated. I was not able to attend the workshop last Thursday. Actually, I guess it was on a different day.
Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday because of the Fourth of July. So I appreciate you guys hearing that and hopefully any questions you had were answered. If not, I'm happy to answer those today. But the purpose of this item this evening is to consider two economic development expenditures. The first is an incentive in an amount not to exceed $300,000. That is to platform real estate LLC. They are out of the Austin area. That is for the demolition of all structures and the redevelopment of the real property located at 520 South Jackson Street, 425 Nature Street, 509 Nature Street, and 507 Nature Street. So you'll see that on the screen there. It's on the left-hand side. That is the form, currently the Trade Winds Motel, as well as some properties that front directly onto Nature Street. These funds may be utilized for the abatement of any environmental issues, i.e. asbestos and things like that, as well as for the demolition of all of the structures on these properties. So the funds are primarily to be used for the demolition and redevelopment of that property. The second incentive is an amount not to exceed $75,000 to One Tribe Properties LLC for the construction of certain infrastructure improvements for a new multifamily residential development. You'll see that on your right-hand side of the screen. So you'll notice they have about 3.7 acres there. That will be, it's proposed to be redeveloped as fourplexes, so eight fourplexes or 32 units. What their request, what their request was to Jedco was for the extension of the water and sewer lines. The benefit here that we see not only is the need for additional residential housing in the community. We all know that there's a demand for that, but also the extension of our utility network. Anytime we have an opportunity to partner with a developer and extend that network out further to not only serve the property that they're proposing to develop, but also provide access to other properties that currently are not served today, there's a benefit. And so we want to be a part of that. And then as you'll recall, in our FY '24 budget, we had an infrastructure category in there where we had some money allocated. So this falls right in line with what we had hoped to do. The extension of that water and sewer line will actually now get out to the Loop, where we don't currently have access to it. So that's a benefit to our public works team, as well as a benefit to our fire department, providing access to a fire hydrant that's not currently there. The property is generally located on the south side of O'Keefe Road and east of Loop 456. I just described everything that they're proposing to do there. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but these expenditures were noticed per state law in the Jacksonville Progress. The Jedco Board of Directors held a public hearing on May 16th of this year, and they unanimously approved both of these items. And this is the second reading of the Resolution 07-2024-01, and I'll read the caption if you don't have any questions.
Shane, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but related to the Assemblage Project, the one on the left-hand side of the screen, maybe speak to the fact that just because this is approved tonight does not mean tomorrow we're going to see track codes over there. And really and truly, it's no guarantee. This is a step in the process.
That's correct. Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. So as James just alluded to, this is part of a process where you have a development group who is looking to redevelop this piece of property. And it's a long, multi-stage process. Right now, they have these properties under contract, and they're trying to work through the financing of that and trying to work through securing tenants for this property. And so each, any one of those phases may, may fall through at any time. The due diligence period should probably end in the first quarter of 2025. So it's about 180-day period for them to go through their due diligence. So again, to James's point, we will not see dirt turning tomorrow. This is just step one. We're trying to put the pieces in place to make the numbers work for this redevelopment. Again, there are still other components of that that need to work in harmony for this to actually happen. But this is a, this is a good thing, in my opinion, from the economic development side, to see redevelopment of this piece of property, which I know we've been seeking for quite some time. I will read the caption. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Jacksonville, Texas, approving projects of the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation that may include land, buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure, and improvements found by the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors to promote new or expanded business development within the city of Jacksonville, providing for separability and establishing an effective development. Are there any other questions before I sit down? Thank you so much.
All right. Item B of that is to discuss and consider possible action, a resolution in support of that economic development incentives. I guess we've heard that. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion if we approve the economic development incentives for those two pieces of real estate.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Gouin.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae. Any discussion when they need? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number seven is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear concerns from our citizens. We try to limit that to three minutes. Did we get any cards, Greg?
No, sir.
Okay. You feel out of form?
No.
Come on. Yeah, yeah. I mean, if anybody wants to, that didn't, this is your time at the party.
I was just going to let you know that the Cherokee-
Name and address, please.
Oh, Mike McEwen, 1624 County Road 3211.
Thank you, sir.
The Cherokee County Federal Credit Union will be shortly starting the new credit union office at the northwest corner of the Loop and 456. And interestingly, a similar entity is also going to be going in next to the movie theater along Andrew Street.
Yeah. Thank you.
Andrew Street.
Any action, any action out of executive session? We do not have any, so we'll skip to number nine, which is our consent agenda. Items under consent agenda require little or notable deliberations by the council. Approval of consent authorizes the city manager to go ahead and proceed with those. It's just minutes. We've got, we've got one appointment, Amanda Childress to the Keep Jacksonville Beautiful Board. Approval of about two tax refunds. I'll entertain a motion on that consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 10 is to discuss and consider possible action for approving a master fee ordinance updating outlining all city fees. Mr. James?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. Wanted to bring this forward for your consideration. Item of master fee ordinance, which consolidates over 300 different fees across multiple dozens of different ordinances available on MuniCode through the city's website. But what we're looking to do here is increase transparency and facilitate an effective annual or even more frequent than that review of this. This is something that'll be further refined as we move forward. Does aid in the budget process as we're forecasting revenues, and really just allows us to keep a better handle on where these different fees are captured and how they align with our peer competitors. You know, there's certain things and services that cities offer that you really want to have an associated user fee with. You don't want the taxpayer necessarily burdened with the cost of new development and review process and things of those nature. And to ensure that that happens, you have to keep a continual eye on these. So this just helps our staff do that moving forward.
Good. I'll entertain a motion, and then we can discuss.
I make a motion we approve a master fee ordinance updating and outlining all city fees.
We have a motion by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mindy Gallit.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion? I got one question. Oh, this is just putting them all into one ordinance to where you can find them all. Are we changing any of the fees at this point?
There's some very, very minor modifications. More than anything, some of the more archaic ones are coming out, like slaughterhouse inspection fees and some of those services that we don't even render. We're not, we don't serve in that capacity.
Mining.
Mining, probably. That one's probably coming out. Exactly.
Okay, great. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 11 is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding a contract for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Boating Access Grant Construction Project.
Yes, Mayor, City Council here with good news tonight. I know at our June meeting, we reviewed the May 30th bid opening for this boating access grant project. We had one bid received at that from a C.E. Marler and Associates at just over $3 million, with the project having been estimated at $1.6 million. At that time, the council chose to go with the recommendation of our design engineer, which was to reject that solo bid and rebid the project. And the great news is that after rebidding it and noticing the project, we did receive actually four bids as part of our July 1st bid opening. You only see three on the screen because one was disqualified for not being completed on the appropriate forms and with the appropriate content. But our design engineer, SPI, is recommending award to Heartbeat Construction. They're out of Tyler in an amount of $1.778 million. So just a little bit over the project estimate, but clearly far below the estimate that was, or the bid that was received in late May.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
I make a motion we award a contract for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Boating Access Grant Construction Project to Heartbeat.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit.
I'll say it.
Second by Councilman Rob Gouin. Any discussion?
Just one question. I mean, and if, that's great. I mean, that's well, that's so much closer than what we were, but I mean, and they're probably great, but Heartbeat, do you know much about them?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question, Mayor Pro Tem. First off, I want to say that nothing was done from a value engineering standpoint or scope modification standpoint as compared to the 3 million. So it's, it's just as it was originally designed. We just had a more competitive pool of bidders. I know that SPI at least received four different positive references on Heartbeat. I think the city of Lyndale, the city of Tyler, potentially the city of Lovkin, as well as a project they worked on, the marina at Lake Stryker. And all of those came back as being positive references for Heartbeat.
Great, that's great.
It is great.
Yes.
Man, I'm really, really pleased with what we saw last month.
So pending this award, we would go into kind of learning a little bit more in a pre-construction meeting about exactly when they can mobilize. But we're going to do our best to mitigate any kind of interruptions to the kind of peak season, but also want to wrap up the project hopefully before next peak season kicks off. So we're going to kind of try to work in this small winter timeframe, which can be a challenge when you're trying to do concrete pours and things like that. But want to try to make it as most convenient as we can.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action approving an interlocal agreement with the city of Castroville for the purchase of the restroom trailer.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, this was reviewed at a previous meeting as well. And the city council authorized the sale of the F-350 duly and the restroom trailer. It's coming back forward before the council this evening because it's an ILA sale method to the city of Castroville, as you had mentioned. The city originally paid just over $33,000 for the F-350, which we sold for $44,000, so that was nice. The restroom trailer purchased in 2019 originally paid 76. Kind of had a conservative estimate when we originally presented the sale to council at 60,000, but per this ILA would be a sales price of 70,000 and requiring the city of Castroville to come here to Jacksonville and haul that back to south central Texas. The fund, the funds received from the sale of these assets do go back to the hotel occupancy fund, because that's where they were procured from.
I'll entertain a motion.
So we're just making a motion for the ILA? Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the sales price per the interlocal sales agreement. Was Centerville, is that correct?
Castroville.
Castroville, Texas, for $70,000.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion? You know, if you look at it, we made, what, $11,000 on the truck? Yeah, and we lost six. So yeah, we made net of five grand, so that's not a bad deal.
Right.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 13 is to discuss and consider with possible action regarding a resolution approving an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for Highway Safety Improvement Program Office System Improvements.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, this is, almost could be called a reimbursement agreement in which the city reimburses TechStop for their services and some of the things that they're going to help us take on. But in January of this year, we were notified that an application we had put in in late 2023 was approved for 100% federal funding on the construction side of the project, which is over and above the typical 90-10. And this is part of the Highway Safety Improvement Program. And that's a federally mandated program but administered via the state transportation authority, so in our case, TechStop. The city's total cost of entering this project is $51,825.3, exceeding, excluding, excuse me, any potential cost overruns on the construction side. But the construction side has been estimated at about $183,000, and we have already $184,572.40 of federal funds committed to this project. And what it's going to do is bring safety improvements to 18 intersections in town. I'm sorry, that's very small, but that's just one schematic of one intersection. That happens to be Philip Street. But they're fairly uniform. What we did is we looked at crash data and accident data that's publicly available via TechStop that they share with the city on an annual basis. And we looked at where we had frequent, kind of high hazard, if you will, accidents. Not all 18 intersections had accidents, but multiple did. And what we kind of concluded as we entered discussions with TechStop is that seemed like some of these intersections need enhanced noticing of the fact that there's going to be a, cross traffic does not stop highway speed intersection ahead. And so this is going to bring some enhanced striping, some larger signs, and some advanced signage as well before these intersections. So originally, we looked at the intersections that had the accidents, and I think there were just two or three. And we said, hey, let's do it here. And they encouraged us to expand the project. And pretty much what you see there is a comprehensive list of local streets that intersect state highways within the city limits of Jacksonville that are not controlled by a signal. And so there, your cross traffic does not stop intersections. So it's really kind of the complete package throughout all legs of town. You know, you see 347, 456, 135, 69, and 79 there. So about the only one you don't see is 175. But, and what, I should say, this is through intersections. So there are some T-intersections, not included. But where you really get into trouble is when you try to, as Shane knows, shoot across an intersection. And that's a gap. You got to be real careful.
Okay. We've heard that. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution approving advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation.
I have a motion by Councilman Rob Gouin.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae. Any discussion?
I do. James, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So this is for just increased signage, not necessarily lighting, reduce speeds. It's just-
It has nothing to do with speed limits. I don't believe there's any flashing hazard type signs. It's going to be advanced warning, like stop sign ahead, stop sign ahead signs, larger stop signs. I think they're going from like 36 to 48 inches, if I'm not mistaken. And then with the cross traffic does not stop signage as well. I think we'll see enhanced crosswalk, kind of striping and retro reflect there, and then kind of an enhanced stop bar as well, just to call your attention to where you need to stop to make that decision.
But no restriping or anything like that, like for turn lanes, or is it possible?
It'll be some isolated restriping, like for instance, at Philip. It looks like they're going to redo some of the yellow striping there, just right in the vicinity of the intersection. This one's a little unique, and that's why I chose it, because it also has the railroad crossing. So I believe we'll see additional signage and newer, larger signage for the railroad crossing as well at those intersections.
Many accidents there.
Sure.
Bad ones.
Right.
Do we know, do we have kind of a rough timeline on when this is going to start?
It has to go, if, if, if awarded, or excuse me, if approved by council tonight, I believe it goes before the TechStop Transportation Commissioners Court in late August, with construction potentially starting before the end of the year. It's a pretty simple project for a highway-based, you know, contractor.
What would be the timing to get it complete? Do you have any other?
Really, that's always easier to identify once you get a contractor selected, just because you don't know exactly how large their crews are.
Got you.
But we'll certainly get, get that information pulled together.
That really matters, you know, so.
It does matter.
It's a great improvement. Any others?
Yeah, because I mean, I'm just thinking like 79 at Panetta. And I mean, it's because the highway, the traffic's coming from 79, and there, a lot of times they're going 55 or whatever, and they come flying into the city, and all of a sudden, that's the first intersection. You know, so I do think there definitely, there's a need for some corrective measures.
Okay. That's good to hear.
Any others? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. We're done. Item 14, open forum for mayor and council. Your time to speak.
Well, I, I'm actually really excited. We have four scholarships from District One that we have awarded for swim lessons. For residents, yeah. So I actually took a page from Tim's book. He made that suggestion to me a couple of weeks ago. So spoke with Devon earlier today, and so, yeah, we've had four residents that are going to be taking us up on swim lessons at Butner Park. So, yeah, really excited about that. And then a couple of weeks ago, we had a really successful Juneteenth event up in Lincoln Park. Had several people come out, had a really great parade. And so, yeah, had a, had a really nice time up there, so, yeah.
Great. Anybody else? City managers report?
Yeah, just a couple of things tagging on to what Councilwoman Horace said. I think we have 49 students signed up for our Session Two Swim Lessons. So there certainly was a need that we've uncovered in the community and look to refine that and maybe expand it for next summer. But we're looking forward to Session Two. Also, as part of kind of the recreational programming, we're trying to spool up. We have a junior golf clinic that's going to be available just a single day, July 13th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, targeting probably that younger demographic, kind of that 6 to 12, but it does go all the way up to age 18. And it's day of registration, so essentially just show up with a water bottle and a parent. They sign a waiver, and there'll be some instruction provided via the first tee program, which is also starting to kind of flourish out at the golf course here in the community. So that's a great point of access to kind of life skills learning as well as the game of golf. Want to thank our community, as well as a lot of our staff, for all the preparation for Hurricane Burl. I think we were blessed. Really, we just saw quite a bit of rain and, and some winds, but damage was isolated. I think some of those storms that came through a few weeks ago got all the weak tree limbs handled for us. And so we, we fared pretty well through Hurricane Burl. But to our chiefs and public works director and all the people behind the scenes, parks, everybody, just, we were really on kind of high alert internally. We had made a lot of proactive steps to prepare, and thankfully, we didn't have to put many measures in place. And Jean, I did this just for you. I'm surprised you're here tonight, but I'm glad to see you. This is probably the number one question that I see on Facebook anytime there's a holiday is, what about my trash? And so we're going to try to just get this out, but there's only three days, you have to remember, that impact your curbside residential trash service. I think, Jean, you said it used to be five, but you've scaled it back to three.
It was just too hard to get it out to the citizens.
Getting it out to the citizens, and then playing catch-ups, I know, very difficult, too. So there's only three days, not July 4th, not Memorial Day, not Labor Day. There's three days. It's New Year's Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. Not Christmas Eve, not New Year's Eve.
Christmas and New Year's on Saturday, Sunday?
Yep.
It's only one day.
There you go.
It's Thanksgiving.
So it's very limited. We're blessed to have them serve in the community and-
And they were out yesterday. I will verify they were out in the tropical storm.
Yeah, they weren't.
Picking up trash.
Picking up their routes.
Oh, yeah.
We had a couple of in down in the south area where it couldn't get down the street because of trees and wires.
And the other thing I'll say about our trash service is we're still two days a week. A lot of our neighboring communities have gone to one-day-a-week pickup, even with the same-sized trash collection bins. And so to have the value of the two-day-a-week pickup is, is really nice. So glad you're here.
Yeah.
Something just told me to be here.
I do know, and I don't have a slide for it, excuse me, but I think Splash Day with the Fire Department is going to be July 27th. That's a great event. There's free food out there. That takes place at the Splash Pad. We have Splash Pads at other parks in the works, thanks to grants. So I mean, things are, things are moving in the park system, and we're really just trying to engage the public on all fronts.
Wonderful. If that's all, we will adjourn at 6:28. Thank you for your participation. Mayor.